Good evening. I'm Maya Knox, a management analyst in the Public Works Department. I've been overseeing solid waste and recycling activities in Simamish since we reorganized Administrative Services last year. So I'm here today to provide an update on those activities and also seek some direction on how to proceed on some items. 2018 has been a big year for our regional solid waste system. Simamish has been working with King County Solid Waste and other municipalities to draft a solid waste comprehensive plan. This effort represents the first comprehensive plan update since 2001, so as you can imagine, a lot has changed. To provide a little bit of background, Simamish has an agreement with King County for regional solid waste services and serves on an advisory board called the Metropolitan Solid Waste Management Advisory Committee, or the unpronounceable MISWMAC for short. Per this agreement, the county is required to periodically update their comprehensive plan and in doing so, submit it for approval of the member cities. And in order for the plan to be adopted, it must be approved by cities representing three-quarters of the population of the cities who are party to the agreement. So as you can imagine, they especially emphasize approval from larger cities. This city council will have an opportunity to formally approve the comprehensive plan in early 2019, but I wanted to introduce it now because we've been asked to signal our support as it goes before the King County Council. So what is our regional solid waste system exactly? It serves 1.4 million people in 37 cities throughout King County, all the cities except Seattle and Milton. It includes six urban transfer stations and four rural transfer facilities located throughout the county. It's also responsible for nine closed landfills and one open one called Cedar Hills Landfill, which is the final destination for the majority of all garbage collected within the county. The solid waste comprehensive plan includes six major planning elements. There are sections on our existing solid waste system, forecasting and data projections, countywide recycling practices, transfer and processing, disposal and landfill management, and the financial position of the regional system. Also infused throughout the plan is a focus on equity and social justice and climate protection. So one of the most significant aspects of the plan is a goal to achieve a 70% recycling rate. This goal comes from a study that found that 70% of all material being thrown away today can actually be recycled or composted instead of being put in the landfill. This is quite an ambitious goal, especially considering that the current countywide rate is about 54%. The city of Simamish's rate is actually at 61%, which is up a few points since we went into an embedded yard waste model at our most recent contract for curbside collection.
Maya, I have a quick question.
Sure.
Do we know, so the percentage of, I'm assuming that's diverted from your waste bin to your recycle bin, that's what those percentages are? Or is that the actual percentage that gets recycled? Because my understanding is if it's not clean and dry, even if you put your wine bottle or your Coke can, it may not necessarily get recycled. So I'm curious if that percentage is curbside percentage, or is it at the facility percentage of recycling?
Yeah, and that's a distinction that's becoming more important recently, but this measurement has traditionally been at the curbside. So the plan outlines a number of different strategies to achieve the 70% goal, and that includes new recycling programs, education incentives, mandates, and improvements to existing recycling infrastructure. Another major highlight of the comprehensive plan is a discussion of how to provide modern garbage and recycling facilities. The northeast area, or Houghton, I think you'd say, transfer station in Kirkland is the third busiest, but the facility is aging quickly and doesn't have space to collect much in the way of recyclables. The county has been exploring whether to leave the station as-is, or to site and build a new station, or to do some combination of the two. And they put this out for public comment in February and March, and after getting those comments back, the county will be recommending to build a new transfer station at a cost of about $13 per ton of material accepted. And just to put that in a little bit of context, that's compared to $2.39 per ton for leaving it as-is, and $9.79 for doing a combination of solutions.
Another quick question. Do you know, is that going to be included in 2019 King County budget then?
I believe so.
Okay.
Can you repeat those numbers for me?
Sure. And actually, well, so the cost of building a new transfer station is about $13 per ton of material accepted. The like current as-is cost is $2.39 per ton, and then the combination cost is $9.79. So finally, as you've likely heard, the Cedar Hills landfill is projected to reach capacity by 2028. This comprehensive plan takes a look at what's next for county solid waste disposal once that happens. The options outlined in the plan are, one, to further develop the landfill, two, to export it via rail to eastern Washington, or, third, to build a waste-to-energy facility somewhere in King County. Each of these has its pros and cons and challenges associated with it, but based on conversations with county staff at our last MISWMAC meeting, it sounds like the county will be recommending the first option, which is also the most cost-efficient option. This further development of the landfill is estimated to cost approximately $43 per ton compared to a current cost of $39 per ton. In contrast, the export by rail option is estimated to cost $77 per ton, and the waste-to-energy plant, $121 per ton.
I do have a quick question too. I think we've got another one here as well. So their recommendation is to go with further expansion of the Cedar Hills landfill?
That's correct.
Is that a, when they say cost-effective, is that in the short term, or are they looking long-term? And how long-term are they looking? Do you know?
I don't, I wouldn't be able to give you all of the details on that. I do have some more slides and information about how they did their cost analysis that I can provide.
Okay. I just would be interested in understanding how long-term, because at some point Cedar Hills, even if they expand it, will still run out of space, and so we're still going to need another option.
Yeah, and my guess is it's short-term, you know, within the next 20 years or so, or the length of the comprehensive plan.
Uh, Councilor Stewart, did you have a question?
Yeah, when you, when they looked at the costs for the building a waste-to-energy facility, did they account for the gains of the, of the energy? And, and so it'd be great if we could get some details on that, that analysis.
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to provide that.
I, I do know that they do have some forecasted operations costs that would be offset by the sale of electricity created there, but I think there's also the potential of other sale items out of a waste-to-energy plant, so it'd be very interesting to hear if they accommodated for that.
So keeping everything in mind, I wanted to seek direction from council today on whether the city should signal its early support of this comprehensive plan. There's an opportunity to sign an advisory letter from MISWMAC, basically supporting the plan as it goes to King County Council, as well as the State Department of Ecology. So I'm not sure would council like to provide that direction now, or I have a couple more slides I can just run through quickly.
I would go through those other slides, especially if they have dollars associated with them.
So just to give a couple more updates on all things solid waste and recycling, so we continue to hold our semi-annual community recycling events. These are largely funded by grants from the State Department of Ecology in King County. Our last event was in mid-April, and it was very well-attended, and we actually sold out of all of the worm bins and compost bins and rain barrels that we provide, so very good attendance. And then new for 2018, the city is now sponsoring styrofoam-only collection events. We're doing this every couple of months, so we had one in January, we had one in March, and we actually have one coming up July, June 16th. And these events really give residents the opportunity to bring their styrofoam in and not just save it all up in the garage for the semi-annual events, or pitch it in the trash can because they don't know what to do with it. So we're monitoring the popularity of these events, and we're considering on whether to continue offering them in 2019.
That was one of the things that we did hear from the community, that they had no mechanism really to get rid of the styrofoam, so we took that into consideration and developed this program.
Mr. Crandall?
I just wanted to chip in. If you do attend one of these events, I don't want to add to the traffic, but go early, because my experience has been, it's a lot easier, and when they're just setting up, they're friendly. The volunteers, yeah. So, you know, make it a, make it early, and they'll take your stuff, really.
They will. It can be a long day out there. So lastly, a quick update on our solid waste and recycling collection contract with Republic. As many of you are aware, international markets for recycling commodities have been unstable since January. Prior to this year, most of our recycling here in the Pacific Northwest was being sent to China for processing, and this was really done for a couple of reasons. The largest market demand was from manufacturers in China. Our local ports made shipping to China an inexpensive option, and China was also willing to accept bales with a certain amount of other materials mixed in because they had the labor force necessary to sort it out. But now, in a national bid to reduce pollution, China has closed its ports to most recycling commodities. We are hopeful that Chinese markets will open again, but the local recycling industry is now in a position where it needs to reassess its practices and identify alternative markets or risk seeing the current model become unworkable. All of this impacts Simamish through our contract with Republic. In March, Republic asked that the city grant a temporary variance to dispose of unmarketable material. The city did grant that variance, and since then, Republic reports that they dispose of approximately 10% of all recyclables collected here in Simamish, which is mostly mixed paper that creates fire and health hazards when stored for long periods of time. That variance will continue through the end of August, at which time staff will work with Republic to reassess the situation. In the meantime, there are a number of groups working on the policy aspects of this. There's a King County Solid Waste and Recycling Task Force, and that includes representatives from many cities, as well as advocacy groups, garbage haulers, and they're working to identify short, medium, and long-term actions. That group has met a couple of times, and they're currently working on sanitizing the list of accepted materials for recycling across all King County cities and haulers in order to reduce contamination levels and confusion over what can be recycled. Finally, staff anticipates that a representative from Republic will come and share a presentation with council on the impact of the China ban in the near future. So this concludes my presentation for today. I look forward to hearing your direction with respect to the comprehensive plan, and I'm also happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, I don't see anybody's plate up, so I'll make a quick comment. I don't know that we have enough information to make a decision right now. I think, I, I know Cedar Hills specifically, the height limit is 800 feet, and they're expected to go, this additional capacity would go to 830 feet, and then the capacity would be completely depleted at Cedar Hills by 2040. So if we support doing Cedar Hills, it's only going to get us to 2040 and no further, and at that point, we still need another plan. So I think understanding the costs and whether they're looking short-term, just to 2040, or how far out in the future if they did something like the waste-to-energy. I don't think putting it on a train and shipping it to someone else is necessarily the long-term answer, but I am more interested in that waste-to-energy, just to find out costs. I don't know if any of the other council members have, or commissioners have any comments, but...
...comment that we need some more data and a comparative analysis.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. I definitely think this is something we should look into. I'd like to find out, just in terms of questions we could get some answers to, I'd like to find out, what is the timeframe cost support level across King County for the waste-to-energy facility? How long is it going to take to build, and are we going to be up against it with the Cedar Hill landfill prior to that coming online? Have other municipalities locally, where are we on the list? I mean, is this meeting with a strong rebuttal? Is the issue with the, the height restriction at Cedar Hill, is that fungible? Can we, is that, is that a, something that can be played with if we have something else coming online by a certain date? Or, I would, I would be cautious about getting something signed on to if we are essentially coming right up against the wall, but we're, we don't have a Plan B. So yes, to waste energy, I think that's a good idea. I've looked into that. I've spoken with King County Councilmember Lambert about that. I think that is something that is going to be in our future, but how that, how that comes online, as we're adding more and more, committing more and more resources to Cedar Hill, we need to look into that. We need to figure out if we're just committing too much of that and overloading the one viable landfill that we do have active right now.
I do know they have, in that comprehensive plan, or the, not the comprehensive plan, but their draft comprehensive solid waste plan, there is a map of the Cedar Hills landfill, and it's got like the little segments of where the landfills go. So there is still capacity, even if they don't change anything now, there's like an untapped area of the map that they haven't started in on yet. So there is time, but your questions are good as far as, you know, if they construct a waste-to-energy plant, how long does that take? And can that be constructed before we run out of space at Cedar Hills?
So very good, very good questions. We can definitely report back to you on those. So any other questions that people might have, areas of concern? The, I believe there is an attachment to the draft comprehensive plan by the county. If you have further suggestions for us, please let us know, but we will get back to you hopefully later this summer.
Good. Thank you, Maya.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm so sorry. It's hiding behind your iPad.
Before, while we're doing the switchover, I wanted to express for, as the acting chair tonight, the Planning Commission really appreciates the opportunities, joint meetings, and I wanted to quickly share with the council that the Planning Commission had an extremely productive joint meeting with the Human Services, well, not back-end, but on May 24th, and the topic that evening was housing strategies for the city. The meeting went very smoothly, and all the commissioners had a opportunity, or in an opportunity, to ask questions and share. And Chair Collinson, I wanted to strongly encourage the Planning Commission members in attendance tonight to feel free to let their voices be heard, especially to ask questions and state their opinions, remembering as Planning Commissioners, we help provide an avenue for the voice of the residents of Simamish to be heard, and at the same time, offer advice to the city council. So I think the Planning Commission is looking to, when we go to solve problems, it is paramount to be part of the solution and not a portion of the problem. So thank you for having us here.
Absolutely.
And I'm encouraging my fellow commissioners to speak up.
And I will... Oh, one other thing.
Oh, turn your mic on.
Here we go.
You're cheating your advice.
Well, no, yes. I rode the bus down here tonight, and just for the information, the last bus going home for me will be at 8:00. If not, I will need a ride.
Yep, we'll, we'll help you out, Larry.
Okay, on that note, we're going to go, move to our second topic for this evening, which is the Transportation Concurrent and Level of Service Emergency Comprehensive Plan Amendment to the Glossary and Transportation Element and Related Code Revisions. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. We will turn things over to Kendra Breeland from Farr and Pierce and Cheryl Paston from the City of Simamish, our Deputy Public Works Director. We will talk about the transportation element. We've discussed this before, and then also related code revisions. And then also, interwoven with that, will be a discussion on the transportation concurrency and level of service that we, with questions that we've been asked and were left with the last time we worked all together. So without further ado, let me turn things over.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, council and Planning Commission. It's good to see you again. If you could, there, there is a little eight-and-a-half-by-14 sheet of paper. These are the questions that came in over the, the weekend about the issue at hand. I did not print the entire matrix. The rest of the matrix is in your packet. All the material will be posted back up so that you and the public can, can take a look at them again. We also have a couple of extra slides in our PowerPoint based on some of the questions that have come up. If I can have a second, though, I am going to bring Josh Anderson in by phone. Again, he's our modeler from DEA. He's, wasn't able to make it up here from Portland, so if you could bear with me, hopefully I can get this to work.
Hello, this is Josh.
Hi, Josh. Can you hear us?
I can.
Okay, can you, we can barely hear you. Can you maybe speak into the phone a little bit more closer?
There is. Is that better?
That's much better. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so Josh, again, is available to help answer questions, as is Kendra on the model. So in your packet, this is one of my, I think this is probably my biggest packet that I've done to date, you have 12 exhibits, and we will go over not all of them, because there is a clean version and a redlined version of the policies, the background, Title 14A and Title 21A. The redlined version has all of the edits that have been made. The edits that are highlighted in yellow, though, are the edits that have been made since the last time we met, so just, just to clarify that. Okay, just the highlighted yellows are either edits that have been made since April 30th, when we came to you with the comprehensive plan, or May 15th, when we came to you to discuss the code. So with that, let's see, we'll start with the PowerPoint. Is that the one? Is that the one? There we go. All right, so if you want to advance that. So we will talk about what the major changes were since the last meeting. I do want to highlight that as we reviewed the comp plan, we saw two terms in the glossary, in the comp plan glossary that we needed to update, so that is new for this meeting. We'll quickly go over those changes. We'll talk about the edits made to the policy chapter, and then move on to the background, and then talk about the code updates. Then we'll talk about the traffic model data and the drones, that this was additional information that the council gave us direction to do, do some more research. We put that topic at the end, out of respect for the Planning Commissioners, because they're, they are here to really hear the changes made to the comprehensive plan and the codes. So that, that's why we, we changed the format a little bit than, than what was in your packet. And then we'll, we'll quickly go over what our next steps are on the schedule. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Kendra, and she'll walk you through the changes.
Good evening, Planning Commission and City Council members. Pleasure to be here as well. So this, these slides have a lot of information on them. I'm happy to kind of take questions and comments as we go through, probably not going to read every word on the slide, but try to hit on the high points, and to the extent that there are items that you want to talk through further, by all means, please kind of let us know. So first of all, again, just to reiterate the scope of this work, the proposed amendments relate only to the council's emergency action, so that does very much limit kind of the scope of our work and, and does provide some limitations. We've gotten some comments. There are sections of the element and the background chapter that may seem a little out of step from current conditions, particularly on the bike-ped side or the transit side, but I'd reiterate again that the emergency action really only relates to transportation, level of service, and concurrency. The necessary amendments, the following kind of amendments were made in response to direction that we've received. As Cheryl mentioned, there's a few new terms in the glossary. We've got that in your packet, and we'll go through that in a couple of minutes here. Concurrent policy, again, has been really reshaped to focus just on AM and PM peak hours, intersection-only level of service operations. We've stripped out the corridor and segment discussion. We've included now the proposed 2019 through 2024 tip in the transportation element, and we revised kind of that future forecast discussion, again, just to tie better to the new proposed policy, which is some, some feedback we received at the last meeting. And then, of course, we have those updated codes. So with respect to just elements of the transportation element policy chapter, again, we updated a few terms, the level of service term and the concurrency term within the glossary, and then within the transportation element policy chapter, the primary change that's been made since the last meeting was to remove the reference to the 7:00 to 8:00 AM and 4:45 to 5:45 PM peak hours, and those, that was at our last meeting, kind of direction to kind of strip out those specific hour references.
Can you go back one second? Let me reread the last line again. Here's on our slide. Okay. All right, thank you.
Other key changes that have been made since kind of the following direction we received either on April 30th or on May 15th, relating to the transportation element background chapter, again, Table T5, which is what is presenting AM and PM 2016 peak hour level of service results. That's something that we've continued to refine based on very good feedback that we've provided, we've received either from council or additional scrutiny from staff. We've added a discussion on key intersections outside of the city. We've, again, updated the tip project list to reflect kind of the current tip, which I know you guys will be hearing for the first time tomorrow night. We have removed all text and tables referring to concurrency segments and corridors. Again, just making sure that the new element doesn't reflect kind of the policies of the past. And then, last but not least, the long-range list of projects has been infused with some new analysis. It includes some new intersection infrastructure improvements based on the 2016 and 2024 analysis that we've been doing, but it also does retain many of those complete street improvements that were identified in the 2015 comprehensive plan.
So any questions on the comprehensive plan? Because we were going to move to the code edits.
I do. Okay. So one of the things you put up here was that the changes could only be relative to the emergency ordinance, and I found several questionable changes that didn't seem emergency ordinance-related. The first is in the glossary on page 23, when we start talking about the pro-plan, and we add in the word "mobility." I'm confused as to how those are tied to the emergency ordinance.
In the glossary... Sorry, just a minute. Uh-oh.
The glossary section, page 23, when I'm looking, and I'm looking at the page numbers in the bottom-right corner, so not on the page itself, so not page 23.
Somehow my screen just went blank.
Pardon? It added the word "mobility." As a defined term? Let me scroll back up, because I had several questions about emergency ordinance terms, so hold on just a second.
Page 23?
Page 23. I'm scrolling to get back up there.
Oh, okay. Let's see. PC1, right here.
So it says introduction, and then it's the second paragraph, last word. We, we, it says "as part of promoting active transportation," and we add the words in, "and mobility" as a change, but I don't know how that is relative to the emergency ordinance.
We could, we could strike it.
I'm, I'm just pointing out the fact that it doesn't seem to be, so if we're sticking to strictly emergency ordinance changes, then I don't think that that would fall under that category. We also put in there the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Pro Plan, and so unless there's some tether to the emergency ordinance there that I can't think of, then that shouldn't be in there either.
Yeah, you're right on the, the pro-plan. We can certainly strike that. The mobility, we are, the whole concurrency program does encourage mobility of all types.
Sure.
We can certainly strike it.
I totally understand. There's a million changes we could make in here that are, would be more updated, but when I suggested a bunch of other changes three weeks ago, I was told we couldn't do that because it had to be emergency ordinance. So when I looked at this, I was like, well, I'm not quite sure that's emergency ordinance-related either. I have another one. Page 95. It's under indication, identification of state highways, and we cross out something and says "run near or adjacent to Simamish providing..." and says run near or adjacent to some Amish providing, and we changed that to the word "provide." Again, it's a minor thing, but I don't know how this has anything to do with the emergency
Well, I guess I would say that SR 202 has certainly received a lot of attention, particularly the intersection with Sahali.
Absolutely. Outside of jurisdiction, though.
And how the operation of that intersection affects the intersections within the city. That's, I think, you know, I don't think it changes the meaning of, or the intent of this paragraph.
No, certainly not. It's just a strange edit to be done with the eye of the emergency ordinance. That's why I brought it up.
Any others?
Hang on. So I did have a question, and you may be able to make a fair argument, but let's see, this is page 100, where under, and it actually is up on page 97 as well, under principate areas, minor archeryals, collectors, we start changing all the locations of the streets and the names of them. We do some wordsmithing in there. I suppose there could be a tie-in to the emergency ordinance there, but if you could help explain that to me, as how these are relative to the emergency ordinance?
These are the actual, the correct names of the streets, and they have a lot to do with, with the physical location of the streets in the city and their names. We need to have the correct names in there in order to make sure that the model is reflecting the correct streets. Is there, is there a reason why?
Okay, that's fair enough. Like I said, I just, I had a question about that, and I said, if you could explain it to me, then that was fair. I just, again, just under the guise of, you know, how these are relative to the emergency ordinance is the only thing I wanted to bring up.
Well, I think having an accurate map is really important and an accurate list of the assets that the city owns.
I'm going through all my notes here to make sure there wasn't anything else. Oh, so page 111, under traffic counts, we say the highest traffic volumes shown occur near the high schools, plural, and City Hall and 228th Avenue Southeast. If we're talking about schools, plural, should we also be talking about 228th Avenue Northeast, since that's where Eastlake is?
Yes, that's correct.
And I had a question because I couldn't figure out what was going on there, but granted, I always look at the red line. I don't usually look at the clean version, so you may be able to answer this pretty quick. Page 126, it's ID number 21. I see an A and a C, and I can't tell if maybe the A is stricken. It just looks like a regular A, so I can't tell what.
Where's the queen?
Letter there. They're both underlined, making it hard to tell.
There is actually a line to the A. It's a slightly different shade of red.
Wow. My eyes are not as good as yours, then. So is it a C? Is that right? Okay.
This is intersection 21 PM peak hour.
Yeah, it just looked like it had two letters there.
C would be correct.
Okay.
To the wording changes, again, you know, I think, you know, we, staff grappled mightily with some of these wording changes and whether they should be made or not. We did try to primarily limit ourselves to the sections that did have some tie to concurrency, which, you know, when we're talking about functional classification of roadways, that clearly has a very strong tie. We did try to catch inaccuracies of the past, and we thought that was important. And then, lastly, from a readability standpoint, I think just when we were reading things and seeing how wordy they were in the past, we thought that didn't really serve the reader very well, and so that's why we did try to make some limited changes from the perspective of making things a little, little, little more straightforward.
So as long as we're here, I asked the question earlier, but I want to ask it again. I think you said that you went out and re-verified all 43 of these intersections?
All of the counts were looked at, yes.
Okay. So I'm still shocked by number 37 with a six-minute weighted average delay in the AM. But, I mean, I've gone through that street before in what we're defining as the peak and just, I don't doubt that it's probably failing, but six minutes seems like a really long time.
And this is one that actually, in most applications, this is the Highway Capacity Manual, it does have some issues with math. I mean, it just starts growing exponentially. And so, one way to address this that I think would be consistent with what we're doing in other communities is just to cap it off. At one point, you just recognize, no one's going to wait that long, the model's going a little crazy on that, so often we'll do greater than 90 seconds or greater than 120. We were, we talked about that as a group, and I, you know, I was a bit hesitant because I didn't want council to feel like we were hiding anything, but that would be what most communities do.
I don't know that I have a preference either, either way, if any of the other council members have a preference. I mean, I think having, she said to cap it. It's saying it's.
Just put a greater than.
Greater than five minutes, which still seems kind of crazy.
A greater than two minutes would be a reasonable, 120 seconds is a pretty standard number.
So Councilmember Ritchie?
I'm trying to understand, I've been through this, I'm trying to understand how the Highway Safety Manual, I don't understand the purpose of a weighted average as it relates to what we're trying to find. No one experiences six-minute wait at that intersection. So it just defies logic, right? So what I want to try to understand, rather than, we can cap it, that's fine. I mean, that doesn't, it doesn't make a difference. We know it's failing. We also know that six minutes is not accurate in any time. So I would just like to know what, I mean, I'm not, you're the traffic engineer. What is the problem? Why is there an issue here that's causing, frankly, members of the council, myself included, to question what's going on, to figure out why are we here? Well, how does that happen? And is it just a, as a model failure? Is it just this intersection? How do you resolve it, other than saying, let's just cap it and call it good? It's failing, we know.
Well, what I would say is that unfortunately, no, the traffic engineers haven't perfected an approach. So I think, you know, for this sort of intersection, there are much better methodologies today to do that. One is, for example, you know, we shared, we went out and we, we got drone observations. So we could certainly actually do, you know, a visual observation on the intersection and report what we're seeing. The Highway Capacity Manual is based on a series of formulas, which are based on driver behavior, and this is just, this type of facility is not modeled well with the Highway Capacity Manual. Now, I think all, none of us would dispute that it's got a problem, so I would say, in most communities, folks just kind of move on. They say, well, we've obviously got a problem here, and so let's fix the intersection. And we're able to see, it's, this is a case where you've got some movements that there is too much demand for what the capacity of the facility is. And so, yes, in reality, people avoid the intersection. They won't go use it, or they'll pick a different time.
Just for the purposes of, I don't have a little spongy thing, so, okay. In terms of trying to understand, okay, we know it's failing, right? We put a cap on it. We add it to our Transportation Master Plan, our tip, whatever, we say, hey, we have a problem here. X solution is applied. How do we know how much better we're doing six, eight, 10 years down the road if we don't have a solid, whatever the analysis is? Standout there, take counts, drone counts, whatever. There is a way to figure out a number of cars going through that intersection at X period of time during, you know, X number of cars, Y period of time, any given day, weighted average, and that equals some number. We go through this Transportation Master Plan from this information coming out of concurrency. We apply some solutions to this intersection, potentially, and how will we know if what we did is helping? If it's working? If we don't, we're starting here, we're here. How do we know, if we don't have a starting point, how does that work?
Well, what I would say is that if you put in the improvements at this intersection, you know, again, you know, there's some, there are some improvements put in the tip. We have been able to model those and say, well, you know, this operates, suddenly we are at a place where this intersection is able to function. The model is able to handle it because we finally got a reasonable amount of capacity for the amount of demand that's there. And so we are able to model and show improvement and, you know, put them on the ground. I mean, I would say, six, eight years down the future, when you've put the, when you've put the improvement in place, you go out to the intersection and see that it's operating a lot better.
Kendra, can I jump in there for a sec?
Sure.
Sure. So one of the things with the Highway Capacity Manual, the calculations that it uses for delay are pretty close to an exponential curve. So the more vehicles you get backed up behind that stop sign, the greater increment of delay each additional vehicle will get. The breakdown point is once you start to pass over about that 120-second average of delay on a side street. That's when the equations really start to break down. So in this instance, we have a side street that's over that 120 seconds of delay. That's when the HCM equations for delay don't really hold up well. When you go out into the future and you suggest a mitigation measure that drops that average vehicle delay below that 120 seconds, that's really into the realm where the HCM delay equations hold true and accurately represent what you would expect to see on the ground. So in the existing case, we are above, I would suggest capping it. When you go out into the future, when we suggest an appropriate mitigation that gets that delay down below that 120 seconds, it's a more reliable result. I think that gets to the, to your main question there.
Thank you, Josh.
Councilmember Ross.
So I think my question was just answered. Effectively, the Highway Capacity Manual is based on a series of formulas on, based on traffic behaviors. As you get above, say, 120 seconds, then it kind of goes chaos. The model exponentially is inaccurate, but when you're under 120 seconds, I could be more reasonably rely on those results under 120 seconds? Because I was, the question I was going to ask is, if I have a problem with traffic behaviors at this intersection, 37th, where do I get confidence in other intersections? So can you reflect, reiterate what was just stated? And I think, bottom line, what I'm understanding is, as you get less than 220 seconds, it's more accurate.
And I don't know that that's a hard and fast number. Maybe, maybe Josh has it, but I think that's generally the case, is that when we have hyper, at a certain point, the model, and it's, and it's a point beyond where the city's actually going to want its congestion point to be, that's when the model is probably starting to overstate that delay. But given what the city's level of service standards are, that D standard, that in some cases E standard, that C standard, the model is able to accurately kind of reflect kind of if we're meeting that or not. So the model is, I would say, very reasonable in saying whether we're actually passing or failing, but I would say, when you get to a higher level of failure, that's when the model struggles to give you a precise measure of that failure. But you can look at it, and when you see those big numbers, just know, clearly something needs to be done at this intersection.
Councilmember Valderrama.
Yeah, Kendra, I'm curious, just out of curiosity, I've been taking into account what you just said and knowing the city now that you've visited all 43 intersections and spent a lot of time out there, what percentage of our intersections or of the model would be outside of that parameter so that it would be struggling to capture? So are we talking about 5%, 10%, 1%? Just to understand what we're dealing with of similar nature to this one.
I would say these are the intersections that you're looking at here that are high Fs. The intersections that are not high Fs, I'd say we've got pretty reasonable results coming out, and actually, later in the presentation, I'll talk about how we feel that the concurrency models generally putting out pretty reasonable results, very much in line with what you'd expect. There's, there's a few counterintuitive areas, and we can talk about those, but those are definitely the exceptions rather than the rule.
And does any of it capture also, or being captured with, we started to build in that latency of delay into the model as well, does that also help to assag some of that, or does that not work with, because of the high demand that's now being put into it?
What I would say is that if you really want to capture a really good latency and get a sense on those super, and again, this would just be your extremely highly congested corridors, so your Isquaw Falls City Road, your Isquaw Pine Lake Road, 228th and Hollyway, those are places that as a part of the TMP, you know, this concurrency test, the routine concurrency assessment that you're doing, is not, you know, the place where you're going to capture all of this and start really defining that infrastructure that you need. That's what, you know, as a part of transportation, a part of your Transportation Master Plan, where you want to actually be figuring out capital needs and really kind of starting to design those improvements. From the perspective of concurrency, it's really, what it is designed to be from state law is a yes/no question. And yes, yes or no, are we meeting the city's standard? And I think, as we've now expressed with these HCM methods, and given where the standard is, that it's, that's far below that 120 or whatever number that is, the HCM methods do a reasonable job of providing the, are we meeting city standard, yes or no?
And just to point out, there are two high fail intersections, 32 and 37. So those, two intersections that have that high fail that the model does not handle, it's intersections number 32 and 37.
So I think just to be clear for staff and the purposes of informing the next iteration of this, I think if council is willing and the commission, I think it should say 120-plus. Because if the model starts to break down at that point in time, I don't want to have inaccurate numbers in here. I think 120-plus gives us knowledge that it's greater than that 120 seconds. I don't know how everyone else feels about that, but, Deputy Mayor Moran?
Yeah, we can't, can't vote, but it'd be helpful to hear from everybody.
One of the questions I need to kind of, is, the assumptions that are being made is to make the people who are looking at the model to.
Makes that intersection flow better. So I'm assuming assumptions are being made to see that happen. So I guess the question is for Josh, is what is being, what assumptions are being put into the model to see the, the future? What assumptions, what roads are being put into? Is it the TIP? What, I mean, I'm just wondering, what, do we have a list of what the assumptions are being done?
Josh, do you want to answer that, or would you like?
I missed the first half. Let me paraphrase really quickly, but it's, the question is, what additional infrastructure beyond what is on the ground today is assumed in the 2024 model? Is that correct?
Yes.
And maybe you can talk, yeah, what's in the 2016 model and what's in the 2024 model, maybe?
So absolutely. So the, the 2016 model included, obviously, the 2016 counts that we collected. We've adjusted a few intersections that were identified as miscounts, actually, one intersection. Beyond that, we have the existing roadway geometry. And when I say existing, I meant what was in place in 2016 when we took those counts. No additional infrastructure improvements beyond that. When we move out into the 2024 analysis, it includes the projects on the 2018 to 2023 tip. Nope. Kendra, can you confirm, was it the 2018, 2023, or 2019?
2019 to 2024.
Perfect, thank you. 2019 to 2024 tip. So anything that, any of those projects that have an impact on vehicular capacity, we included into the 2024 operations model.
Does it have those being completed, or as started, or as working on, or as?
And I don't know if Josh was able to answer your, or was able to hear your question, but I think, I think your question, Deputy Mayor, is just kind of what's, what's assumed. And so, we actually have a kind of 2024, you know, no changes beyond what is, you know, kind of currently programmed in there. know, kind of currently programmed in there. And so, this is actually, we, this model helped inform what would be needed to be added to the 2019 through 2024 tip. So, I think, Josh, if I recall, you started with essentially the 2018 through 2023 tip, and we added our traffic volumes in there. And then we looked at, well, what intersections are not meeting the city's AM and PM peak hour standard? And based on that, we were able to identify additional projects that should be added into the 2019 through 2024 tip. And so, there is a final kind of synchro traffic model run, if we want to call it that, which presents what the level of service operations would be with those investments in place.
And it would be those completed, is your question?
Saying they're all completed?
The ones, the ones up to 2024, I believe. That's what's programmed into the system.
So, I'm going to make a quick comment on that, because I think, based on her expression, I'll go ahead and say what she's thinking, which is, we're, in our future model, we are saying that the, and I would like him to define the projects that are vehicular capacity, which is what he just said. What is that defined as? Is those concurrency projects that are on our tip, or how are you defining capacity projects? Because the assumption is, is that the projects sitting on our tip, and I would venture to say you're talking about concurrency projects on our tip, are completed within six years. But we have repeatedly shown that we put projects on our tip that don't get done. So, that would be an inaccurate assumption, I would say, in the past, and potentially then moving forward, unless you can help us define what you mean by this vehicular capacity projects.
The projects that are included on the tip list, if it's a bicycle or a pedestrian improvement type of project, those don't add capacity to an intersection for vehicles, so those are not assumed. If it is, say, signalization of an intersection, or a widening from a two to a three lane, something to that effect, where you will be providing additional vehicular capacity as defined by the Highway Capacity Manual, then they are included in the 2024 analysis.
Okay. So, I think I would just make the comment, and I love to use Isquaw Pine Lake Road as my poster child, but that's been sitting on our tip for 12 years, with a three-lane section and a five-lane section. So, the assumption that we complete projects in six years for informing our future model would be an incorrect assumption then, based on past, what we've done in the past? Councilmembers, oh, sorry, go ahead, if you wanted to.
Oh, I was just going to say, as we discussed at the last joint meeting, there are some assumptions that we need to put a stake in the ground and say, this is what we have to assume. Otherwise, we'll never, we'll never have a calibrated model. In fact, we won't even have a model. And so, for example, the 2016 Traffic Council was one of those stakes in the ground. We said, you know, we have to assume that that's, that's the year that we will use the traffic count data. So, the tip is the same stake in the ground, unless the council says something different. When you approve the six-year tip, it's our, it's our assumption that, yes, the council's approving this six-year CIP, and it will provide, somehow provide funds to get those projects done. And with each successive year, as projects keep getting moved out, you know, the council certainly has, has the ability to tell the staff, look, we're not adding any more tip projects. We're going to get the ones done. For example, Isquaw Pine Lake, we're not going to continue to just kind of push it out. So, that is one of the things, yes, you're right, is it hasn't been constructed yet. And if that's something that the council, well, I mean, last year's council did, did say, start work on that project, which we are working on right now. And so, we do have to have certain pieces of information that we have to assume is going to happen. And that's one of them.
Completely agree.
And when we do, when council does pass the tip, council is expressing their intent to do that tip. And if they don't have that intent, then they should not pass it.
I might argue, though, that funding those projects on the tip would be important. And when we get to that and look at it, there's a lot of zeros on a lot of concurrency projects that are on there, and that would be problematic. But, and I totally understand what you're saying about putting our stake in the ground. Completely makes sense. But I think too, you know, when I look at the tip and I, you know, say, wait, you know, we haven't done Isquaw Pine Lake Road, the response I get from staff is, yeah, well, that's just a planning document. But we're putting a lot of reliance on that planning document as far as informing our future modeling. So, I think, you know, as we go through and look at the tip, I think we need to recognize the importance of those projects that are on there and funding them, recognizing that our future model and every application that walks in the door is being based on the fact that we're planning to do these projects that may or may not get done if we don't fund them.
For the projects that are funded, yes, yes. And there's another purpose for that tip, is to apply for grant money. So, if we get grant money, that might be a reason why we would accelerate that, or not accelerate the project, but show funding for a particular project.
Councilmember, start.
So, one of the things, and this is, this is a question, it may not sound like a question, but this is the sort of asking, is this, is this in fact true? So, this is weird to talk with my back to you. So, in order to, so you have the 2016 numbers, and you identify a bunch of failures. So, in order to determine if something is going to fix one of those failures, you need to feed that project into the model to determine, because you might be like, oh, well, what if we add a, you know, a turn lane here, and you add it, and it's still failing, right? So, you, you use the model that way, is that correct? So, then, then to, I think, Deputy Mayor and Mayor's points, when, when we fed those in, we say, okay, we've got these lists of projects that we think will remedy the failures, you leave those in there for when people come in to apply? Is that, is that correct? Because I think that's what your assumption is, right? Is that that 2024 model is the model that's going to be used when the next application comes in.
Well, to be included in the concurrency assessment, and, you know, we've, we're having to make some assumptions here, it actually needs to be a funded improvement. So, again, before it gets left in the model and is used as an underlying assumption as development comes in, and they get to take credit for that, you know, and benefit from that capacity, we actually need to see it in a funded six-year tip. So, this is where we're in a little bit of a funky state right now, that we're talking about this now, but tomorrow night, we're talking about the tip. But in terms of the improvements, that was something that staff took very seriously as we brought to them. We actually brought to them a number of, you know, here's the failures, and Josh and I actually came up with a number of potential fixes, and sat down with city staff to say, well, which of these potential fixes is the right one, the most affordable, fits within your character? Those are all things that were looked at.
So, this is where, and again, this is a question of me understanding how the process works. So, the process is, you have to be able to come to us with a list of potential fixes. And in order to do that, you have to feed them all into the model to see what results it produces. But then, we're going to have a tip, and we may say, we've got, I'm just going to make it, we've got 20 projects, we're only going to fund 10 of them. So, you would then go back and remove 10 of those projects. And then, I guess the other question would be, if we have other projects that while they're funded, we don't actually expect them to be completed in six years, would we be able to then remove those from the model as well for the purposes of modeling for applications?
I believe so. I don't want to speak over you, Cheryl, but.
So, you're saying the projects that we didn't do?
Well, I'm saying that, so we have a tip. So, if we use the example, we have 20 projects, we can only fund 10 of them. But even seeing that we have 10 funded, let's say, one of them is Isquaw Pine Lake Road. And we look at it and say, practically speaking, by the time we design it and actually start working on it, and we're not really going to start design until two years from now or whatever, we don't think it's actually going to be completed in six years. So, we could actually not include funded projects if we have any reservations about their ability to be completed until we start to get higher degrees of confidence. So, this year, we wouldn't include it, but two years from now, when we are like, oh, look, we're ahead of schedule, now we can go ahead and include that in there. Is that, is that how that works?
Josh, I'll have you jump in, but I assume that if the project is not fully completed within that six years, you have not gained any capacity.
Right.
So, yes, if the funding, like, when we bring the tip to you tomorrow, you'll see future, a column that shows future, it says future expenditure, something like that. That clearly shows you're not going to finish that project within the six years. So, that project shouldn't be in the pipeline.
Right. So, that way, when the, when the applications come in, that capacity doesn't get included or that benefit? Because some, maybe not capacity, maybe increased efficiencies or whatever that. But those efficiencies are not included.
Correct.
That is correct. And so, clarification from something I said earlier, the 2018 to 2023 tip projects, there was one that was the five-laning of Isquaw Pine Lake from 48th to Clohoney, and that was identified as funding in future years, because that was not going to be delivered by 2023, the end of that six-year tip. That project is not included in the analysis in 2024 for concurrency, because it was all future year funding and not delivered by the forecast year of the analysis.
So, can I clarify? Does that mean Isquaw Pine Lake Road's not included?
The five.
Clarification. Sorry. What was that?
Josh, go ahead.
Correct, correct. The five-laning of Isquaw Pine Lake between Southeast 48th and Clohoney is not included in the modeling that we've done.
What about the three-lane segment?
No, that one is not either.
Okay. I'm not sure who had their thing up next. Was it Chris? Okay. I'm going on Jason. Councilmember Ross.
Okay, this continues to be my rub. We come to each meeting talking about assumptions, trying to clarify assumptions. Assumptions should be clearly stated every single presentation, so that before the meeting, everybody's on board and consistently can identify, not general statements like vehicular capacity projects, which ones? That's an important question to answer. Identify those projects. We have to be very, very clear on identifying the underlying assumptions so we can move forward in this process, because this is what drags us on. This is what puts us in the spin cycle. And quite frankly, I'm getting tired of it.
Commissioner, go ahead.
Yep. I just had a question on the tables that we were talking about. So, for line 37 and 32, I know, you know, it's, I think the suggestion was made that if it's more than 120 seconds, you just put 120 seconds plus. So, but I think there's an advantage to having the actual numbers, even though they're exponential. So, is there a way to leave those numbers in and maybe make a note, footnote somewhere saying, these numbers, you know, after a particular point, the model just blows them up exponentially? Because I think it's really important to have, even though it's the blown-up data, to have that data in that, in those tables.
We can, let's go back and craft some language and see if it's acceptable.
Councilmember Valdroma.
Oh, was he? Okay. Just yell at me, Jason.
He's so patient.
Councilmember Ritchie.
I've got all the time in the world.
Yeah, my little boss.
So, more to Councilmember Ross's statement, what Mayor Malchow was saying, I guess my troubling thought here is that we keep blaming other people for the failures of the council. The council is aware of what roads are in the tip. And over the past decade, previous councils have failed to fund the roads that are in the tip, and they keep punting them down the road, as Mayor Malchow said. So, it's not, from my perspective at least, it isn't that staff isn't telling us, it isn't that our consultants aren't telling us. We know where the problems are. We're putting them in our tip, we're punting them. Every few years, we don't want to raise revenue, we don't want to spend money on roads that we know are a problem. That's how we got in the situation we're in right now. So, we either, in my mind, use this as a pivot point and say, that's it, we know we have problems, we know we're going to tackle these roads, it is going to require more revenue, we are going to make a change, we're going to do what we said we're going to do, or we can look back in three, four, five years and say, we didn't turn the ship, we didn't make the changes that we know we needed to do. And it is messy, and it is expensive. And there are more people living in Smamish than there were 10 years ago, and there are more cars on the road, and we haven't added a single lane of capacity. We haven't raised revenue in nine years for our state, for our city. So, I think fundamentally, we need to figure out whether or not this is something the council can do something about, recognizing we know the data. We are getting good, reliable, reasonable data. We either choose to act on it and have the political will to act on it, or we don't. But it's not staff's fault for not telling us. They're telling us, we are refusing to act. Not we right now, maybe we right now, we'll see, but we, the council in the past, the previous councils have refused to act, which is what got us here. And I hope we're recognizing that we can do something about this right now. We can learn from previous mistakes, and I hope we do that.
I want to make one quick comment, which is the fact that we're talking now about two different things. We're not, we were just talking about the tip, but what we're dealing with is the transportation element. So, I think Councilmember Ross's question was about the model, which is comprehensive plan and concurrency related, and what you're talking about is tip. And I don't disagree with the word you just said, but I just want to make that distinction, because the tip is tomorrow night, even though the tip is actually technically in this transportation element. So, it is a piece of it, but I just want to clarify the two distinct arms here.
And I don't disagree, but what I'm trying to clarify is where, I mean, I don't disagree with what Councilmember Ross said. We do need to have reliable data here, and it is a part, a component of the comprehensive plan that we're trying to modify, we're trying to amend. And if we can't rely on it, I'm saying I think we can rely on it, because common sense should prevail. But I agree, it's two separate issues around the same problem, traffic, transportation, you know, congestion. How do we deal with that? And to me, it's, they're interrelated so much, I think that they belong in the same conversation.
Very good. Councilmember Valdroma.
And I would concur with Councilmember Ritchie in the sense that they are interrelated. We got on this track because we were looking at the assumptions underneath the model as far as the tip and the six years. And to the point that was just raised, there's a famous adage of, we have met the enemy, and the enemy is us. It's the council who hasn't been funding these tips year after year. You, this is your third year, this is my fifth year. I mean, so, it's the council who's been looking at this and punting this down. So, we have to recognize our role that we've played. These are the assumptions we've given. Alignment, the city manager has just mentioned, hey, there's an intent to change that, put that in. Okay, let's give it to them, let's move that stake in the ground. But there's a lot of stuff that's coming out here that we really have to look in the mirror at ourselves, because why wasn't this done? Well, it wasn't done because the council didn't fund them and go through. That said, some of these projects, and some of those that you had mentioned dealing with Clohoney, were put on the tip, but always asterisks, never to be funded until Clohoney came in, and until, and supposedly, that Clohoney was going to pay for its way, which is another whole assumption that will have to be revisited, both here in this council to respond to our citizens. Those are council actions that have taken in the past that we're going to go to. Likewise, I'll just throw it out there, the AM/PM issue, that was a 2005 council decision that was made on that, and I haven't seen anything different done to it. So, they had to put a stake in the ground, they're acting on what the council is giving to them. If we want to change that stake, it's in our prerogative, and I think everybody here wants to have reliable data, wants to be able to move forward in a manner that makes sense and that people can relate to. And that's what this whole exercise has been asking for, in a short period of time, that we've mandated to staff, get a model together, looking at the level of services at intersections that we can then put in. And if we want to make those things and changes as we go forward, it's, and by the way, we always told that this would not be the end model. This model would just be an interim one, and we would continue to work in an iterative process going forward. Every city works on concurrency. I don't know of any city that's gone into the depth that we have. It's great that we're doing, but there are a lot of implications on what we're doing here. Both, are we going to fund everything on the tip? How are we going to fund the quick-fix deficiencies that we've come up with? We haven't even dealt with our deficit at this point in time. There's a lot of issues that are haunting, that are going to haunt this council here later this year. Thank you.
I'm not sure, I think Commissioner Baughman, you are probably next.
I set you up with that.
No, no.
No, no. At the risk of Councilmember Ross kicking me, I'm curious, Josh, what, we've talked about capacity and the output side, what about the input side? What are the assumptions that go into the additional traffic, the additional build-out and everything like that? Because that makes just as much difference as the capacity does. And I guess I've never really totally understood, because we're spreading it out over a six-year period, we have a certain capacity we've designated to build out with zoning, what goes into the model to describe that input side?
From a capacity perspective?
How many more trips? How many more cars?
So, what we do is we model, say, a project, it's currently on there, that's a bad one, I can't think of one, let me grab real quick. So... There's one, Southeast Fourth Street, 218th to 228th, basically the town center, three-lane widening of Southeast Fourth Street. So, when we include that project in the model, we're not saying that that opens up X amount of capacity. What we're doing is, we are saying, at the intersection level, in the analysis model, a three-lane widening of Southeast Fourth Street would have X, Y, and Z implications at the intersection. You widen, maybe you have an additional turn lane or a left turn lane. The HCM equations then tell you the additional capacity of that intersection.
And I just want to actually clarify the question that the commissioner had. Is your question relating to transportation capital that's either on the ground or assumed? Or are you actually asking about growth and land use?
Yeah, maybe my assumption about the model was incorrect. If the model only calculates capacity, then it ignores, that's not the right way to say it, then utilization becomes irrelevant, is I think what you're saying. Because to me, we have 2,000 more single-family homes that are under permit, ready to go in the pipeline. We have capacity for at least 2,000 more. We have town center, which is potentially 2,200 dwelling units. In other words, I think it's a little confusing, because right now, we have a certain number of cars on the road, and we're doing a model that shows what the performance of the intersections is. And we're going to add quite a few more trips from those projects in the six years from now until 2023. But it sounds like the model doesn't actually take that into consideration. It's only analyzing the performance of those intersections based on the physical characteristics. I guess I'm confused now.
I think in a, I think in a, there are multiple models, but I believe we had this conversation previously.
Yes.
And essentially, they do take the growth targets in that OFM gives us, and we basically straight-line that out over, let's say, the next six years, and where we are now and what's going forward. So those, those are factored into the number of trips expected.
So, can I reflect that back and see if I understood? Just quickly, the model assumes full build-out of what we've allocated at this point in six years, or some portion thereof?
No.
The portion that we believe will take place in the six years, based on the growth capacity that we were expected to bring in.
So for the six years, actually Cheryl's bringing up a memo that's actually really good for a variety of reasons, and this was included in the May 15th council meeting. And it actually does describe all of the traffic models. It also actually provides information on a lot of those assumptions that have been requested. So this was previously presented again. So, on May 15th, we presented two kind of background pieces of information. One, what the highlights have been over the last year, where we've, where we've been, what we've discussed, what decisions were made, what were memorialized in resolutions or just direction from council. The other update was a three-page memo on the traffic models. It had all of the key assumptions that went into the models. As many of you know, a model is very, very complicated, and there are a number of assumptions that are made that we just don't have the time to go in and go over every single assumption. This paper did highlight the three major pieces of data that goes into the V-zoom model, which is the demand model. We did talk about the two intersection models, synchro and-
Some traffic?
Some traffic. No, not some traffic.
Oh, sorry. Cheryl, can you actually scroll down? Because what I don't think you have on here is what we just discussed, which is the tip. It's not on there.
The tip? No.
The projects from the tip? No, no, no. But if you scroll down on the models, that's not included in this sheet. And I think that speaks to what Councilmember Ross was saying, which is, we are not given all the information, and it keeps kind of leaking out slowly but surely, which is why we end up in the spin cycle going backwards, because every once in a while, a little piece of information comes out, and then we're like, oh, and we go back and we re-watch a whole bunch of videos.
I'm sorry, it says right here, the second evaluates concurrency failures over the next six years with approved pipeline. This model is used to create the tip, and the tip is part of the pipeline model.
But does it say in there that it assumes that the projects on the tip are completed? I think that's what I went back to go look and find, and didn't find on that sheet, which I found perplexing.
Well, as Josh related, when we build these models, we look at what the assumptions are in the current tip in terms of what is funded to be completed. So if a project was funded, it's shown in the tip not to be funded within the six-year horizon, then it's not assumed. If it is assumed to be funded within the six-year horizon, then it's, then it is included.
Council, or, sorry, Deputy Mayor Moran.
Is there any way to get a list of any, a list of all the assumptions that have been made, just so that we can?
You mean every single assumption that's made in every single model? Is, is that the request, or kind of the key assumptions?
Key assumptions.
The key assumptions are in this, are in this paper? I mean, if there's-
It sounds like you're asking for clarification on how the tip projects are handled in this paper.
I'm not sure what she's asking for.
Well, I'm asking for, because what I wouldn't see in the tip is, I wouldn't see any assumptions that were made on any quick changes to intersections by, you know, a change in light or whatever. So I'm just trying to see if there's any way to get, you know, a listing of assumptions that are made.
In terms of the projects?
Yeah.
So the projects are in the, let's see, which table is this? Background Table T7, page 69 of your packet, it has the 2019 to 2024 tip that we'll be talking about more tomorrow night.
So that's, that's all the assumptions that have been put into the model?
No, those are the, those are the assumption, assumed projects that the city would build.
I know, but I'm looking for all the assumptions that are in the model.
Right, so I'm, so the key assumptions are in this paper that we presented on the 15th. Again, there are a lot of assumptions that go into the model, so, I mean, we'll, I'll- Maybe I can partially answer Councilmember Moran's question here. In terms of what, you know, generally from the operations, because it seems like it's mostly the synchro model that you're interested in, in terms of the types of traffic operations, the level of service results that it's providing. What we have been doing very carefully is that the 2016 model reflects what's on the ground today. So we've worked really closely with Stephen Chen to make sure if a signal has a certain type of phasing today, that that's reflected in the model. Looking out to 2024, the types of improvements that are made are, one, reflecting your capital improvements that are in your six-year TIP. So, the major ones, yeah, are in that table that Cheryl mentioned. But in terms of, if there are some minor improvements, for example, flashing yellow arrows are being added. That's not maybe necessarily called out here, but we know there are eight or so locations that are planned within the city. Those are the types of things that have been put in there, to the extent that we know that it's going to have adaptive signal control, and so the signal's going to operate a little bit more efficiently. Those are things that have been put. So I think those are things that we could definitely provide a summary for you in terms of those results. And then later in the presentation tonight, I think, you know, another question that I think I'm hearing, particularly from the planning commissioner's side of the table here, is, you know, what, what, what are the, like, land use growth assumptions that are going into the six-year pipeline model? So let me make sure I quickly answer that just very clearly. Essentially, what we assume is, what's on the ground today plus what has been approved for construction, and again, I'm talking on the land use side, within the next six years. And so, if you've got an application and then it's got concurrency, then that goes in there. And so we do kind of keep track of that. And then the only additional kind of background changes we do, kind of try to pay attention to, well, we recognize Issaquah and Redmond aren't going to stop growing, and so we have looked at kind of what their projected growth patterns are over the next long term. I think we look over a 20-year period for them, because those are the only numbers that we have. And then we just annualize that, and we just take six years' worth of that growth and add it into kind of the background growth on streets. So that hopefully kind of helps demystify a little bit what we've assumed within the six-year. When we look out the 20-year, so out to 2035, what we're paying attention to are kind of those targets that we've been given to us by the state and by the county. So they tell us, okay, you're supposed to add this many employees, this much households. That's, again, what we're planning for. So it's targets, not growth capacities. And I think that's one, I was hearing Josh, the engineer, talking about capacities and intersections. That's a very different thing than a land use capacity. No, we are not planning for your fully zoned capacity. No community does that, because of course, you know, if you, if you were to maximize all zoning everywhere within the city, that of course would be much, much more growth than we reasonably anticipate within a 20-year horizon.
Kendra, I have one more quick question, just because when you were explaining inputs into the model, you talked about the flashing yellow, and we, I'd had an email exchange with somebody at staff who said it was out, but you just said it was in. Which one is it?
We took it out, actually, at your direction at the last meeting, because we were presenting 2016.
Okay.
So we've taken it out. But by 2024, we anticipate those eight would be put in, and so when we're looking from a concurrency standpoint, we've included them.
Gotcha. Thank you for the clarification. Deputy Mayor Moran, you're, do you have another question, or you're good? Okay, I just want to make sure. Okay, so I think we can finally move on.
Okay. Oops. Sorry. And I was, I was expecting, I'd have to bring up this land use thing, so. All right, we got through here.
Oh, wait, sorry.
Unless there's any questions.
Yeah, I, back, if we're, if we're going to start getting into, are you moving into the edits for the code?
Oh, it's, yeah.
Okay, do you want me to go up on, because the tip is actually embedded in the comp plan. Do you want me to talk about it tonight, or you want me to hold that for tomorrow?
It depends on what the, maybe, maybe ask the question and then we'll-
Well, some of the numbers are inaccurate.
I'm sorry?
The numbers are inaccurate that are in here, so do you want to talk about that tonight, or do you want to talk about that tomorrow?
How about, can you just send them to me, to us, and then we'll correct the numbers?
Well, I don't have the exact numbers.
We'll look at that. I think we should hold that for tomorrow.
Okay, very good. We'll hold that for tomorrow night.
Or for later, maybe, tonight.
Well, if we're talking about the tip formula, I'm fine doing it tomorrow night. And I know it's just a draft version, but I think, you know, it helps to inform the council the magnitude of some of these projects if we have the correct numbers in here. And they also need to be changed then in the comp plan.
It was updated Friday afternoon.
Okay.
After you, you spoke about Issaquapine Lake.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, that was added a couple million bucks.
So, once I start taking notes on here, I don't-
I understand.
Yeah, so if it's different in here, I haven't seen it.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Are we ready for me to go on to the code? It's just a very exciting topic, everybody, so. So in terms of code updates that we've made since the last meetings, first of all, to definitions. So we provided a specific definition for the city's traffic AM, traffic model, AM peak hour, defining that from 7:00 to 8:00 AM, and really making the point that this is accommodating many schools' peak hour. And actually, I do see a little typo in here. I, being a previous English major, we will move the apostrophe till after the S, because these are plural schools.
The peak hour does not belong to them.
We can, we can, we can work on, on that wording a little bit. Same for the PM peak hour. And then concurrency test, you'll see that we have made some revisions. And again, actually, this is working really closely with Stephen Chen, just to reflect kind of better language in terms of city practice around concurrency test. Going on to the next set of definitions, you'll see the financial commitment definition has been revised. And I think this is reasonably reflective of direction we were given at the last meeting. Okay. And then, some minor changes to capitalization in the project improvements definition. Again, going on to the concurrency test description in Section 14A 10040, we provided, again, some, some, just some edits, just to make it a little more clear. Again, it was moving that ORA range to be subsection C. For concurrency test, again, continuing with these kind of minor edits, the city would conduct a concurrency test as needed. Again, that came from Stephen Chen. And then, the definition 21A 15320, direct traffic impacts, we actually found, this is a defined term, but it's actually not used anywhere in your code, so we thought we would benefit from taking it out. And so that is the end. No additional edits proposed for titles 20, 21B, and 27A. So that's the end of actually the comprehensive plan edits and the code edits. So I want to pause here to see if there are any additional thoughts. Okay. Well, we're going to move on to the topic on the traffic model and data updates since the last meeting. I think this is the one where Cheryl said, this is the topic we've moved specifically to after the comp plan and code topics, just in case these aren't as much of interest to planning commissioners. So, you know, kind of following on some of our previous meetings, staff has done a very close, careful check of the data that's feeding into our traffic operations model. So they checked through intersection turning movement counts for the years 2013 all the way through 2016, just to see that we don't have any anomalous numbers. What they can report back is the data looks very reasonable. The intersection of Sahali Way and Northeast 36th Street was the one that had the miscount, and that miscount has since been reflected, and that intersection is doing fine, which I think is in line with everyone's expectations. We talked about the flashing yellow arrows. There are actually only one location that flashing yellow arrows had actually been put into the 2016 model, and that was at 228th and Northeast 8th. So that flashing yellow arrow was removed from the modeling. Again, looking out to 2024, we'd anticipate that we start to reflect those flashing yellow arrows in the future. And then, last but not least, you know, the traffic operations model's been carefully reviewed and refined, and, you know, an example of that is really going through the signal phasing. Stephen Chen worked really closely with the consultant team, just to make sure that we're reflecting if it's protected, permissive phasing, making sure that that was put in correctly. And so there were a few locations where some fixes were made. The other thing we're doing, not just looking at the numbers and looking at past data, is something that this council's been really adamant about, is just using the best data. I mean, we're in a technologically sophisticated community, so let's use our resources here. And so, one of the ways that we're looking to make sure that our traffic operations analysis results are reasonable is drones. Now, of course, we did have a drone vendor come out just a week or two ago, and he actually did some observations at these four intersections. These four intersections were selected because they were ones that we've had a fair amount of discussion with council about. So, these are short video clips, we're still reviewing them. We actually just got them in on a flash drive. But this is something we'd anticipate being able to show to council and potentially discuss- But this is something we'd anticipate being able to show to council and potentially discuss with the public at a future date. And then last but not least, just in terms of keeping an eye on those more systematic issues around congestion, the city has purchased INREX data. And so that, you know, is going to be just a real treasure trove to make sure that we're recognizing, you know, where are those issues where speeds are very low in the city because of, you know, kind of ongoing issues? And using that just to, not just to support the city's modeling concurrency efforts, but also to support that day-to-day planning. Where can we make some signal timing tweaks and really improve conditions for citizens? Where are there issues where we need to maybe put our heads together and find new solutions? So really using these resources, this is something that the city is very committed to doing moving forward. So some of the key findings that we've had as we've started going through, just looking at our concurrency results. What I would say, and this is echoing what was said earlier today, you know, most of the results are reasonably consistent with our expectations. And on this screen here are all but one of the failing, the intersections that were shown to be failing cities' level of service standards in 2016. So just quickly going through them, the two Issaquah Falls City Road intersections, Kohani and 242nd Place, these ones were shown to be failing. And I don't think that that was a big surprise. The city's already got capital improvements planned through the Issaquah Falls City Road Project. Issaquah Pine Lake Road and Southeast 42nd, this was an intersection where the city required the developer to install a signal. So we saw that it was failing. The city has already addressed that issue. Issaquah Pine Lake Road and 230th Lane, this intersection, again, is a part of the Issaquah Pine Lake Road study. So again, this is one that we reasonably expected to see a failure to meet city standards and bore out in our results. And this is one that clearly the city's already been thinking about. 242nd and Northeast 8th Street is, of course, you know, a pretty big issue today, but it's a school traffic issue and it's fairly short-lived. So the city is working closely with the school there to think about their start time, to think about their access, to think about what things can we put in place to really get this area to operate better over the course of the day, but primarily during that school peak. 37th, or, excuse me, Northeast 28th and Sahali Way, we talked about that tonight. Capital projects have already been anticipated for that project through the Sahali Way project. So again, it's an issue that the city has known about for a long period of time. And so again, showing that it failed in the concurrency model, that just reiterated that what we're getting out does reasonably reflect what, you know, a reasonable traffic engineer would expect. And then the last two intersections here, I would refer to these as kind of your more primitive intersections in the city. Southeast 32nd and 244th and 256th and Issaquah Beaver Lake Road, these are intersections that we know just aren't really sized to, you know, current growth and the growth that we're seeing. So these are improvements that, you know, we're glad to have some things in the tip to move forward with, be it roundabouts, be it always stops. But again, these were intersections that passed definitely that common sense test. I will admit, there are a couple of locations with some potentially counterintuitive results. And I think these are the ones that we do get questions from council on. One is Southeast 40th and 228th Avenue Southeast. This intersection, I think, really suffers from a very conservative aspect of the Highway Capacity Manual 2010 methodology. This is kind of a known flaw of that methodology, even though it is kind of state-of-the-practice. This intersection, you know, we're showing in our 2016 results that it fails. And I think, you know, just a reasonable review of it and our drone data is bearing out. This intersection operates quite a bit better than the Highway Capacity Manual would indicate. So, you know, kind of your potential alternatives, you know, either one, the current approach is we're identifying it as a failure and we're including some improvements to create a two-way left turn lane and some restriping on that intersection in your six-year TIP. And current approach would be to add that project into your tip. And that would address the issue and we'd be able to show it as a non-deficiency intersection for concurrency. But there are other choices here. One, you know, this intersection, I guess, you know, I would raise the question, is this one that should be included in concurrency? For most, for many cities, I would say that, you know, the character of this intersection, they probably would not include it in their concurrency program. The other is that you could revise the level of service standard at this particular intersection and allow for a higher level of delay. And those are two approaches if you don't wish to have a capital improvement there. Yes?
Just to clarify, where is that? Is that the development coming out kind of on the south end of 228th?
Correct. Correct.
Yeah, it's like Samamish Highlands or something like that.
It has two entry points on the central median and it has a median.
Okay. Down there by the...
Not that far, but it is on the, it's on the east side.
Okay. Sorry, I was trying to get my...
The development is Samamish Highlands.
It is, okay.
The second intersection that we've had a fair amount of discussion about is Northeast 32nd, Seventh Way and Sahali Way Northeast. The average intersection delay, what I would say is that while we do stand by the average delay that we're showing, that may understate, that definitely understates the experience of drivers that are waiting on that side street. And we don't dispute that. Also, this intersection is strongly impacted by operations at SR 202 and Sahali Way. And so this is just one of those artifacts of the way that we've chosen to move forward. Beginning this year, you know, we had extensive conversations with council about, well, do we do the TMP first and then get to concurrency? Or do we do concurrency first and move forward with the TMP? And of course, the decision has been made to move with concurrency first. And this is one that's a little awkward because we don't know, what is that improvement at 202 and Sahali Way that the city is really excited about, that we want to throw our support behind and really want to plan ourselves around and really model? We don't know that yet. So at this point, you know, the question is, is there anything that we could do at Northeast 37th and Sahali Way that would really improve the conditions there? And I would posit, no. The issues are definitely downstream. So again, you know, is this something that as a part of the TMP, we would be looking at very closely? Is this a place where we're going to do simulation modeling and really throw a lot of our mental energies at to really improve conditions for Samamish residents getting in and out of the city? Absolutely. But from the perspective of concurrency and is this the place to fix that issue? Unfortunately, it's not. Concurrent really asks us to look at those intersections within the city.
Kendra, I just want to say one quick thing, which is on your, what you have written here, and I don't know if it's based, your key finding is based on observation, but my observation and driver experience is the opposite of what you have written up there. It's not the average delay is understated for drivers on the waiting side street. It's the delay is understated for the drivers on Sahali, which is the main leg, not the side street. Just for clarification.
There's, and when we look at the drone data, there actually is a fair amount of side street delay. The delay that you've got on Sahali Way, it's, you're going slow. I don't dispute that. You're going very, very slow.
But is your drone data looking at 7:00 to 8:00? Because that's not when the delay is.
We actually...
Or did you look later than that?
No, we actually did collect drone data there from 7:00 to 8:30 AM. So we wanted to capture, because after your comments, we actually did want to capture that full period of time. So what I would say is that yes, you know, you're moving very slowly as you're inching down the hill there, you are rolling. And so from an HCM perspective, that's not actually technically delay that's being experienced at that intersection.
Sure, but it's not down the hill that we're experiencing the creeping. You get it there too a little bit. You have to creep all the way to get to the light at 37. So I think the last video that I sent was about 8:52 AM. And that was way backed up, long, but it's, you know, it's not when we're looking at that 7:00 to 8:00 hour. And that's when our delay is being calculated to 7:00 to 8:00, not when the, not when that intersection experiences its issue. So I think that's the caveat.
Well, what I would say is that, you know, I would say, let's remember where concurrency falls. This is one of the many tools that's in the city's toolbox. Concurrent doesn't answer every question that we have. And so something that, you know, we've been sharing with the city is that, you know, yes, you know, we agree the 228th and Sahali Way corridor has got a lot of issues. And, you know, as a part of your other tools that you have, your transportation master plan, your modeling, INREX data, drone data, all of these things can work together to create kind of the transportation system that you want. So again, you know, bringing it into a concurrency discussion, I think it's that intersection and the experience that drivers have exiting Samamish is actually, is a very valid concern. I just don't know that that intersection necessarily is the place to address that So anyway, so here's, you know, just kind of that, oh, were there other questions? Just in terms of that full arsenal of improvements that are, you know, kind of at the city's disposal, again, as you can see, there's a great number, traffic impact fees coming up with improvements that can kind of help, you know, really focus on these areas of key concern. These are ones that, you know, we've got mindful and the city's got a lot of opportunities to address moving forward.
Oh, sorry, Deputy Mayor Moran.
Can we get a copy of the slides that you're using this evening?
They will all be posted. All the materials will be posted again.
So last couple of slides here. One, a question we'd been, we'd received was just in terms of the travel model and what some of its assumptions are. I think I already addressed this in responding to the planning commissioner earlier, but just the pipeline model, it really just does assume permits that have been submitted. And then from the perspective of, you know, kind of full build-out, and this is specifically at the town center, here's the land uses that we've assumed, but that's looking out to 2035.
Kendra, as I understand, the town center's planned for 10 years, but you're going to assume that it's all done in six years for the purpose of this model?
No, no, no.
35, 35 for build-out.
Oh, okay.
Yes. So the, what we're assuming for town center in the six-year pipeline model is just the permits that have already come through to the city.
Thank you.
So here's kind of our lay of the land. I mean, I guess I will say it's nice to see that this table gets just a little shorter every time we come back to you because this has been quite the journey. But again, tomorrow night, a focus on the six-year tip. And then I guess it's kind of a series of meetings throughout the month of June on the six-year tip with the goal of getting to a resolution adopting the tip by June 19th. And then coming back to the planning commission with the comprehensive plan updates and code revisions on June 21st. And then coming back to council for public hearings on July 10th and July 17th. So that's, I think, all that we have for tonight.
All right. No one has, oh, did you have something? Go ahead. That's a member of our drama.
Are you about to shut down?
I am. We're done.
I'll impede that. So I just wanted to take the opportunity, going back to what the vice chair had said about being able to hear everybody's opinions. Obviously, you've heard the council in both of these sessions. In the last session that we had, your chair, Shannon Collins, had talked about her confidence in the model and the process. There, I'd like to take you up on what you said and have every planning commissioner be heard on their thoughts, since you are the voice of the people by state mandate. Go ahead, Jane.
I guess I have to start. I feel a little bit behind the times. I don't, I don't quite understand how we can go about this backwards, which it seems like to me. So it's hard for me to get my hands around it, I just, my head around it. I don't quite get it. It seems like I have questions that are very practical about what is the developer going to do when he comes in and asks this question or proposes this? What's going to happen to him then? And I start to think about that. And I can't, no one's ever discussed it in this format, in this meeting. The, the big things that I want to know, the overall picture, has never been discussed or explained to me. So I sit here kind of in the dark and I don't want to slow the meeting down. I want to get out of here. So I have, I have notes that I take and I bring them to give to staff. They're the grammatical things. They're the little things that I think we shouldn't be talking about in here because I think it wastes our time. We, we were told in planning commission, don't waste everybody's time. Be sensitive to that.
We appreciate that.
So I, I do that and I give it to staff. I have mine ready to give to Doug tonight, since Kelly isn't here. I have questions. Let me see if I can read. For example, in general, if you're basing concurrency on intersections, how do you determine which intersections a particular development will impact? Does location make a difference? I don't know that. I've never known that. So I'm, I think maybe everybody else knows that, but I don't. And then we're talking about housing now. And here's an emergency problem that I think should be brought up. Could a person install an ADU with no additional parking claiming transit use to be the sole access to a new unit and be exempt from the concurrency test? So another question, and what, what should a person do? Then how could that be monitored? And are we getting ourselves into kind of a rat's nest with these problems? I think I'm looking at bigger pictures, maybe things that everybody else has already talked about. So I'm kind of worried about bringing them up at this point.
It's kind of a dangerous question and if everybody wants to go home to ask. The thing that I take away from a lot of this discussion is that this, I believe, started out as an issue of making sure that we had a tool that we could measure concurrency for development. And a lot of the conversation has really actually evolved around traffic and driver experience. So they're intertwined, but they're also separate topics. And I've struggled along the way to think about, you know, being frank as a member of the community, there's a lot of things that the council and the planning commission and the city staff should be working on. And there's been a tremendous amount of time, energy, and money spent on this. So are we getting value out of that? In other words, for our investment, are we in a place where there's any difference in the result of our concurrency testing for projects? So did we do all of this and we end up collecting the same fees from developers, doing essentially the same projects, but we feel better about ourselves? To me, that's really kind of the question because that was what we started out talking about. And I'm not sure that I know that a segment level of service, an intersection level of service, a time of travel model, if any of those will necessarily result in a different concurrency outcome. They may result in a different set of tip projects. And in the long run, we may choose to do something different so that we can improve traffic for driver experience. But concurrency is where we started and concurrency is what underlies a lot of what's going on. And I still am not convinced that we know what the outcome of that will be when it comes to concurrency projects as they come along in the next 6, 10, 8, 6, 8, 10, 20 years. I think it's a good exercise because the people of Samamish and all of us can feel more confident that the tool we have is a better tool. But I'm not sure that we're gonna, you know, we have a tool, we need to use it. We've had a lot of talk, now we need some action. We need to get going, doing something. I don't know what that is necessarily. That's a different debate. But we spent a lot of time talking about this and I'm concerned that there's other things that are not getting the attention that they need and deserve. And we, as either elected officials or selected officials, are obligated to fulfill, you know, that effort. So I'm not saying that I don't think it was the right thing to do, but I wonder if it's become such an overpowering influence in the city that we're not getting other things done. And I hope we can now move on. And I hope we can now move on and deal with some of our infrastructure problems that are not road-related, talk about stormwater improvements, do some of those sorts of things, the housing strategy, and so on, which are really important to the development of the community. I hope that we can, I hope that the council tomorrow night can focus on that and recognize that we're solving a concurrency problem, and now let's move on and look at other things on our agenda.
I'm the one that wanted to go early, but I just, I heard Jane talk about the big picture, and something came to my mind, because on Thursday, the, there will be a panel at the planning commission meeting. And I guess I want to ask, I know there's a transportation subcommittee, is there a housing subcommittee?
There is.
Well, there isn't?
No, there is. At the retreat, we put a housing in with Jason Ritchie.
Transportation, there's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So what I'm seeing is, and talk about being concurrent, the planning commission is working on housing and looking at, you know, how does this affect the town center? So maybe, you know, offline, we can get some of the planning commission meeting with the housing.
Housing committee.
Housing committee. Now, to me, I think we could use some input or share input with, with the council.
Certainly those members of the committee could attend.
Yeah, and vice versa, yeah. Okay, thank you.
I want mine.
Thanks for the opportunity. As, as I've listened to these comments and presentations and things, I, kind of echoing some of Jane's comments and Mark's comments, and, and kind of going back to what we often ask in planning commission meetings, and the first observation or question or whatever is, how much effort is planned to educate the public about the impact of single occupancy vehicles on our whole traffic problem, right? I think there might be an opportunity just to say, hey, if people would change their behavior, this could go a long ways to solving these problems, and be a lot cheaper, probably. And also, I'm just wondering what the likelihood that the traffic will actually improve without significant reduction in that single occupant vehicle? You know, if we do all these things and build all these projects, are we really, like Mark said, going to end up with, you know, a better place, or is this going to be a lateral shift? I have a feeling it probably will be, just kind of, we hope to mainstay status quo, perhaps. I don't know. And then, and it kind of leads to the question, can we really build our way out of this perceived problem? Is that a practical expectation for us to have anyone in the community believe it might be the place to start? And then, as I read through some of this, we talk about community character, and that's kind of this lingering thing, right? All these things we're talking about are going to impact that community character, and it led me to kind of think about what community character, some future community character or existing community character, because I think that's a distinction that needs to be made when we're talking about community character. Thank you.
All right, I'll go last. So my name is Rituja Endapure. And first of all, I think the staff had a really good idea of having these combined meetings with the council. I think that has pushed me personally to be more diligent in my work and in reviewing the packet and asking questions, so I really appreciate that. I think, you know, it's been a learning process, just learning about the concurrency model and how we want to go about it. But I think the bigger picture that people want to see is, how are we going to work around the transportation master plan? And I think, Jane, that's probably where your big-picture idea is, like, you know, how do we solve the transportation problems in Samamish? Because I think understanding concurrency is really important and what goes into the model, but how do we solve the big-picture problem? The other thing that I've seen is, you know, how do we collaborate regionally? And, you know, work with our two neighboring cities to solve our problems, because that is a big issue. Also, I'm really excited to see the new TIP, and, you know, especially the 256th and Isqwa Beaver Lake Road, because I know that's going to get impacted very heavily after the construction of Isqwa Falls City Road starts. So yeah, I think overall, I think this has been a great exercise in working together. And, you know, I always have fun on the planning commission, because we have great ideas and we work to solve problems. So go planning commission.
If there's nothing else for the good of the order, we'll call that a night.